All right, I think we'll go ahead and call our work session to order. Just wanted to do kind of a recap here. We're kind of midway through this process. Just wanted to make a couple comments for everybody that watches or listens in that to remind them that this process started about a year ago when we worked with Jeff from the AEA to kind of develop some goals for what we wanted to accomplish out of this. And a lot of those goals surrounded the educational benefits to the kids moving forward. And so I think, you know, we kind of got into this process with the LDD and moving forward. And I think there's a lot of questions out there about, you know, all the numbers and all these things going forward. And just kind of wanted to make a comment, I guess this is coming from me and maybe everybody else will agree as well, but they are large numbers that are being posted out here and we have to start somewhere. And I think the biggest thing to keep in mind is that we're starting to try and put everything on the same playing field, the best case scenario for every situation we have. And I'm gonna sit here and say, there's no way. I mean, that's a huge number. And I think we all are realistic in knowing that that's not probably what's going to happen. But in order to get to an ending solution, I think you have to go from the top and work down to figure out what we can get to. And so I know there have been some questions, I've received some questions about numbers and going forward, but I think it was just kind of a good reminder here to say, this is the process we're going through and it doesn't mean that, you know, if we come up with these two solutions, it's gonna happen tomorrow. It may be a year, it may be five years, who knows? But I think the point of this is to try and work through so we have some sort of plan so that we know going forward how to spend money and where to spend money. If that's the goal of the ending is, you know, two buildings, three buildings, one building, whatever that goal is, it helps us determine going forward where to spend the money in the interim. And that might be small projects, that might be repairs, it might be those types of things. But I just kind of wanted to, and you guys can feel free before we turn it over to Sam too to make any comments, but I just felt like we needed to kind of do a recap for those that are attending that might just jump in, you know, midway through that maybe haven't listened into all the meetings and just kind of give a summary.
I would add to that, Jackie, that before we can spend large sums of money, we have to really go to the public and ask for their blessing to do that. And, you know, I don't know, I don't know what our sum of money is, but before we really do anything, we have to go to the public.
And I think those kind of comments and those next steps will be talked about maybe tonight on how to get back to the process. Does anybody else have any comments or anything?
Okay. Good evening. Great to be back. So with this is I think my third workshop. A continuing process is part of a planning process. And so I'll, you've given a good intro and I might, when we get sort of after an overview of the scenarios touch base on what are the logical steps from here. But the big thing is that the planning process is making sure that we have, we understand where we want to go and then we work backwards to understand how that dovetails with our finances and how those things can be implemented over time. So what we have tonight is we want to share the work that's been done to date just to remind ourselves where we've been. We want to look at the revised scenarios. We want to look at the cost benefit analysis again, reminding folks that it's the most important thing to make sure that we're spending every dollar the smart way is to understand the cost benefit relationships of the various competing scenarios. Decisions we make now have long-term cost implications and so we want to make the smart decisions that lower costs so that we can spend the dollars on textbooks and instruction and educating students of our community. Then it's time to have feedback and discussion about possible next steps, where we go, what would you like to see from here? So to remind everyone, we started by brainstorming, just what are the, what are the possible combinations of facilities that any reasonable person would consider as we move forward? We identified 47 different possibilities with, with the four existing facilities, that's not including the flex center.
Does that include the new one?
The new one, no.
So it should be 48, correct?
Uh, yes, 48, exactly right, yes. 48 is what we started with, you're right, so it does become 48 with the new one. We narrowed those down to the top 11. At the last meeting, you looked at the top 11 and the cost benefit performance and you identified seven that warranted a more, a closer look. And the closer look would be, to that point, we had looked at just areas, what should a school of 600, how big should it be? And so what we said we would do the next time is we take, we peel away the next layer of the onion, if you will, and we look at actually how things might lay out. We do some feasibility drawings. And so that's what you'll see tonight, just their feasibility and program drawings, understanding the areas that would be required and how would areas fit on various sites so that you can look at things and say, okay, this makes sense or this doesn't make sense. So what we're gonna do now is just go over those revised scenarios. They started with two building scenarios. The first scenario is the one where we are repurposing the Wall Lake Elementary School, oh, yes, I'm sorry, we've got packets for all of you. Thank you. We repurposed the Wall Lake Elementary School as the pre-K 6 for the entire district. And then we've repurposed the high school as the 712. And so it's not really repurposed, but 7 and 8 gets peeled off, goes to the high school, 5 and 6 gets added to Wall Lake. So what I want, so on your sheets, what you see is our quick hand sketches, these are something, this is architectural shorthand, you know, if we wanted to make a presentation, we would hand this to a draft person who built it. And I thought you'd appreciate just the shorthand sketches. We really didn't, we really don't have time to put finished drawings together and it doesn't make sense at this point. So what that does really quickly is it, it takes down, this is a sketch that's superposed over a Google image. And so it takes down these, these metal buildings, these later buildings and builds an elementary wing here. So it's an addition of approximately about 17,000 square feet, does some remodeling, physical needs assessment work there, and that becomes the pre-K 6 for the entire district. You can see just from your sketch that it chews up a fair amount of the site, at least as much as you have now. The other half of this scenario is that the high school now becomes a 712. When you look at the high school and how it lays out, this seemed like a logical, big picture layout to us. The existing academic wing here might logically become the 78 facility. And you might, to me, if you're going to, if you're going to invest and this is going to be a long-term 712, you're going to replace this 1920s era building. The gym now can be repurposed wonderfully to be an auditorium. That's one of the ways that we're creating cost-effective auditoriums that can also function as commons areas, commons areas being lunchrooms. So this idea just says that you're gonna try and repurpose this to be a commons and an auditorium. And if, as this moves down, we can show you what that actually looks like, just trust us for now. And replace this area with a new gym that becomes a middle school gym. So you've got sort of this portion of the building zoned as the middle school. This now can become a two-story high school wing that goes out just to the edge of your parking. So the thinking was, that's possible to construct during school, you know, because phasing with projects this complex is going to be a challenge. So this was a first idea. What you, what we've shown here is we've shown that between sort of this L-shaped classroom wing, which is two stories, this becomes the new high school, new high school learning environments, you could put either a gym or a wrestling room. So that's what we've shown. This gives you an idea of the amount of space taken, the amount of space that could, that's available, that makes sense. So the band room and the chorus room stays, the library above and those classrooms, business classrooms, they all stay. But what this becomes is, it becomes a fairly new facility, a new 712. So when you look at that combination, this is what's represented by that combination. So that's scenario 2.1.
Sam, the number, top right corner?
Yes. Okay, all right, so that's a total dollar if you were to do everything today, right now, start to finish, complete project cost. And of course, I don't work with any school districts that tackle everything at one time.
Right.
What they all do is they identify the, the plan, the optimal outcome, the optimal configuration, and then they determine the roadmap to get there. So that's the end game, that's the complete build-out of your master plan, essentially, which normally would happen over 10 or 20 years. Some people do it, Iowa City did it a lot sooner, closer, but there are, there are some that completed in 10 years, but others take 20. So here's idea number 2.1C. This is again where Wall Lake is repurposed and is the pre-K 6 for 600, but SAC City Elementary School is repurposed as a 712. All right, so that's a little different. And what you see is that because of the way this school lays out, it's got a nice division of sort of mind, body, and spirit, if you will. This being, the academic wing being mind, body being this, and sort of this area part of the facility with this lunch area. With that in mind, let's see, as a 712, this becomes an ideal area for expanding. I should have asked John, how much of this property is yours? Is it beyond the tree line? Because this gets into that, that tree belt that's back there. It also builds a high school competition gym. In order for this to be a 712, it seems as though in addition to this, you would need another gym. But then this becomes a really nice, a really nice layout for academics and then this becomes some of your applied arts. So it's family consumer sciences, band, it's chorus, it's all of those things. So it makes it for a logical layout. It's a little, well, I'll get to that in a second. So that's how that lays out. The next idea is-
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Tell me if this is the wrong time to ask.
No.
So where would industrial tech and ag and all of it in that direction?
Yeah, yeah, so you've got sort of a biarts wing, a core academic wing. That's, it's not a bad layout. So 2.1D is where SAC City Elementary School is repurposed as a pre-K 6 for 600, and then the high school is the 712. So to repurpose this facility, pre-K 6 for 600, doesn't require, in our first run-through, after looking at how the existing spaces are being used, doesn't require a huge addition. While you have four sections of, you know, classes now, that's because you could easily make those four sections work into three. And this building lays out really well for three sections. So it's, we figured about an 8,800 square foot addition.
Does that addition all classroom space then?
No, actually, it's freeing up things like the library, taking it out of here so you can perhaps put some special ed in here, it's music, it's art. Repurposing the kitchen, what I, my first thought was that the kitchen, you would want this space to expand, the cafeteria space, so you would move the kitchen out, build a new kitchen and a new administrative space, those spaces. And when you look at this, you know, we'll have to look at it closer if this, if we continue to look at this one, but you've got a fair amount, you've got most of your educational spaces covered when you relocate some of these things. I mean, for optimal utilization. And you'll notice that this cost went up slightly from the last time you saw it, and that's, that's the addition because of the auditorium here. Repurpose- ...thing as an auditorium. If you don't repurpose that as an auditorium, if you leave it as a gym, obviously that'll save dollars and bring things down. That's, that can be something that's also phased as part of a master plan. But I, most school districts that I know want to look at what are all the possibilities and then let us decide whether or not we want, we want to consider them. Don't make that judgments on our behalf. The next one is 2.2A. This repurposes this facility as a pre-K K 1 through 6 facility and it does the same thing at the high school, it creates a separate pre-K K. So this is just a slight variation on the previous concept. Essentially, it splits the pre-K K population between the two facilities. So for instance, here at SAC City, this becomes the pre-K K, there's a little addition here for an office, there's already a nice entrance here, this seems to lay out really very well, possibly as a separate facility for the pre-K K, and then the rest of this is a 1 through 6 facility. And at the 712, it's not as, it's not as, it's not as easy, but it looks like we could carve off a corner there that could become a separate pre-K K facility with an office. The next idea is one where SAC City and Wall Lake schools are both elementary schools for 300, they're pre-K 6 for 300. So we didn't show any additions or, any additions required for those populations because it's, you know, close to your current population. So all we've shown in this is the physical needs assessment work that was identified by Estes. But then this building becomes repurposed as a 712, excuse me, the Lakeview High School becomes repurposed as a 712, you're familiar with that already. So there are 3.4A, this is one of the two new ideas, and essentially they're, they're the same, we've only got one drawing to illustrate them, but this is the idea that says, add the middle school component to SAC City Elementary School and leave this facility, leave Lakeview High School as the 912. So that has two configurations, 3.4A and 3.4B, one is a pre-K 6, 7, 8, and the other is a pre-K 5, 6, 8. I haven't shown any difference, it's about the same square footage, more dramatically. And so what that does, it turns out that when you're relocating the middle school to SAC City Elementary School, there's slightly additional cost. And the reason for that is, if, when you move the middle school to the high school, I don't feel you need a new band room or a new chorus room, you can use the rooms that exist. Or at least that was my initial assumption, you wouldn't necessarily need to add additional spaces. The other thing that we've shown that if this becomes a pre-K 6 again, you add another gym. So this is the only scenario that actually has four gyms. All of the other scenarios, when you, when you look at them closely, if this facility stays as a pre-K 6 or 600, we're still showing just that one gym. So what happens is, I'm getting to the punchline, this scenario doesn't score as well on CLEO because it's got more cost. There is slightly more cost to move the middle school here. If this district was clearly declining and was going to decline to the point where you would move to one building, this is the sort of thing that you would think about because this is probably the most logical building to be a pre-K 12 building. Does that make sense? That's one of the reasons why you don't want to set this aside yet because it's slightly higher cost. And again, 3.4B is just the pre-K 6, 7, 8. So let's show you how they perform on a cost benefit analysis. The, we start with lifecycle costs. In other words, we take a look at how old the buildings are, the building components, and we project them over a 30-year lifespan. And that includes replacing roofs, when roofs need to be replaced, which energy costs, operating and maintenance costs, and the cost of construction. Project it over 30 years, bring it back to, use a present worth factor and bring it back to today's dollar. The status quo, doing nothing, maintaining four buildings is your highest lifecycle cost, it's your greatest area. And it's area that's, you know, candidly, and you understand, is more school than you need. So on this cost, high is bad, low is good. So 2.1D, which is the scenario, that turns this into a pre-K 6 or 600, and it turns the high school into a 712, that has the lowest lifecycle cost. In terms of lifecycle costs are, are made of first cost and then ongoing operating costs. Sometimes the first cost may be higher, but the operating costs are lower. So it's always important now to check the operating costs as well. And again, status quo is by far the highest operating cost. This is the reason why doing nothing is really not in your best interests. 2.1D again has the lowest operating cost. As far as educational adequacy, all of the proposed changes really enhance the suitability, the functional suitability of your facilities. In this chart, highest is best. So the 3.4A, the new scenarios have the highest educational adequacy, followed very quickly by 2.1D. In fact, anything here, well, anything above 70 is acceptable. So all of these are significant improvements. What happens is that that lifecycle cost ends up being the dominant variable. When you put them together, this is the cost benefit ratio. Status quo is, that's the least thing, that's the worst path for the district to take, the do-nothing path is the worst path. The best path by the cost benefit analysis is this building as a pre-K 6 and the high school being a 712. The next next is the pre-K K facilities at each, followed by the one at, where Wall Lake is a pre-K 6 and the, and this building becomes a 712. But I really think, again, that's skewed, that's skewed because SAC City has a 712 has a benefit that is not being reflected here. These two, if they were the same number of gyms as every other scenario, they would bump up over this and they'd be in the top. But these two have a bit of a financial handicap because they're providing greater program, it's not an apples-to-apples scenario. Does that make sense? They, they're the only scenarios that, that deliver four gyms and the, the number of scores on the functional adequacy about gyms is just one. So it's just not enough of a value to show the different value that that might provide to the district.
Sam, last time, our last meeting, we talked about transportation costs.
Yes.
Is that all, is that all in this cost benefit ratio?
Yes. Yeah, we have what are called option variables, and John provided us the shuttle costs to and from, if we were to close, and Rachel could show, show those to you, but I think those are the only option, option variables that we included. So these, these do take those costs into account. So what, what occurs to us as we think about what is obvious, you know, what's obvious to us because we work with districts is you're not going to do everything at one time, it's not, that's not a master plan, that's, that's winning the lottery. A master plan is phasing the work so that you develop an optimal, you develop an optimal outcome over time. It's a roadmap for future facility decision making. As we looked at it, some of the questions that will drive the right answers are your thoughts about how do you want to do this? Do you want to go from four buildings to three, four buildings to two? Understand what are the higher priorities, what are the bigger needs for the district? And these are the sorts of things that the community really should be involved to answer because that's how we build a plan that's built for success, since we, all schools are in the business of obtaining public permission. These are, these are the logical questions to ask our community. One, the key item to us seems to be the middle school and how you deal with moving the middle school. So some of these scenarios are in early phase one, if you will. So for instance, one idea says that you build a middle school to this facility as a phase one, that's somewhere just shy of 15 to 16 million dollars. But if you do that, and I, I don't know what our capacity is, our financial capacity, and that's the other piece of the information that helps us start to begin a phasing plan. But if, let's say that were our ultimate capacity, that, that would mean then we're not able to do as much at the high school or anything at the high school. On the other hand, if you wanted to move middle school over here as your first step and it was still all that you could do, you may not be able to do some of the work down here. So the next steps are for us to work on understanding what our fiscal capacities are, what we want them to be, that's also something that makes sense to enlist our community in, and then to start to narrow some of these down. In my mind, there are a couple good options here, really strong options, good either-or options. And there are some that just aren't as strong that should be set aside as we continue to sort of narrow the options and then get a manageable number to bring to the community for their feedback.
As you went through the whole process here, any part of your CLEO, does it take, take into consideration the staffing needs?
We have, yes. I'm sorry.
I'll ask you next time.
There were two option variables. One is transportation and the other was staffing. In general, we don't, we never planned for, I should say never, here, we did not plan for any change in the teaching staff because whether you're, you step the same number of students. But what we do look at is, there are some economies that can be seen from the change in administrators, folks who maintain the building, maybe some food, food staff. And so we have that number as well. Those two things are option variables, right? There aren't any more?
Yes.
Because, you know, that's an important question because it turns out that the cost to staff a building is actually the biggest part of a lifecycle cost, much, much greater than the just original cost to construct it.
On your list there for priorities, where does the elementary, I mean, we have the high school and middle school covered there.
Yes.
You know, elementary is one where I think the class sizes are getting smaller quicker because there aren't as many coming in. So where does that rank as far as the priority discussion of, you know, is that something that needs to be looked at?
Yes. I mean, because this building is, you know, this building is in such good shape and in terms of its ability to accommodate students, I think it's an immediate upgrade without too much of an investment for, for this building to become a pre-K 6 for 6, for 600. What I meant was, that's not sort of the big picture thing, that's, they're a critical path decision. To me, my first thought was the critical path decision is the middle school. But that would be a logical, could be a very logical first step, to go from four to three buildings and improve dramatically the effectiveness of your learning environment utilization because it's, it's a smaller project. Does that make sense? That could be a nice first, first step. But again, something that's, something that's good to bounce off the community. Did I answer your question? Yeah, just for everyone else's understanding, the process started again with Estes Construction went through and did a physical needs assessment. So for instance, the work that's planned in all of these scenarios starts with that work. The physical needs assessment work planned for this building was replacing the animal system and including the air conditioning. So, just so everyone knows that.
One more question on that one, I think it follows up on the education, just to make sure, there's no change in the teaching staff, if you would consolidate those?
Right.
But we did kind of mention the four to three section, so through retirements or attrition or some, some way, there may be additional savings in that environment, is that?
Yeah.
I guess I'm just kind of maybe looking more to the administration to ask, to answer that.
There's one other piece to that too, is we lose a lot of teacher time through travel between one building to another. So I mean, when you really script it out, there's probably, probably one teacher that we lose just in travel time from one building to another.
Well, then in addition to that, to what Denny said, in the superintendent's report tonight, I'll share with you what enrollment looks like and we're down another 24 kids. So, and I've got it for the last four or five years, I can share that with you. But I was just doing some math in my head, looking at that pre-K 6, pre-K through 6 at 600 kids, it's not 600 kids, I would, I mean, and I'm not, it's, yeah, that's-
Right.
That's a small thing really in the whole deal, but-
You're right, as a rounded number, we had planned for a thousand a district and just rounded things. People, people appreciate more rounding on the high side, so there's always room for growth should it ever occur, but you're right, it's, it's fewer than that.
Because we're below, what, I'm just looking at our numbers, or 8 and 50?
Yeah, yes, not as opposed to a thousand. So this plans have been developed so that should the new Amazon plan decide SAC City, you can have a little row. That's probably not a good example. Bringing in a new city grid.
City?
Yeah.
Could be a coffee. So one more, I guess I'm kind of, ballpark, do you have an estimate? So one more, I guess I'm kind of, ballpark, do you have an estimate of what it would, you know, just how big is the dollar amount to get to that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm just kind of trying to figure out what piece of that plan is.
Right.
This combination and what piece of it is.
Sure, sure, for sure. Why don't I, I'm just gonna leave these budgets with you. So these are the individual budgets for, what scenario is that, Rachel?
Which one, sorry?
Um, what is it?
I think it's the one that rated, the two-one-D.
Yeah, two-one-D, okay, yeah. All right, so the individual components of two-one-D. The high school is about twenty-two point two, that's a complete build out. SAC City is about six point five, two point seven of that is the physical needs assessment. And that's something that may be perhaps phased over time. We can go with that, we can go through that on a fine, with a fine tooth comb to talk about how we, how we might be able to lower costs if that's what, if that's what's important. We've got a building addition of around three million dollars. Rough, rough numbers. Does that make sense? So I'll leave these numbers with you so you can see and. John, if we do anything financially, this has to go with the community, right?
Anything with those numbers probably would, you know, we could borrow, we could borrow against your, say, we can borrow against your thirty-three cent capital. But I think if we look at that first big force that Estes did for us, those may be added up to six or seven million, even with the board to do on their own. But that, that would use all of our one cent saved money, which you've seen over the course of the last year would, you know, would typically save maybe a couple hundred thousand a year out of their, for future projects. But that would use it for technology and building materials.
How much does PEPAL bring in? How much do you say roughly they need here?
Thirty-three cent PEPAL is about a hundred and twenty thousand and save is running eight hundred thousand, sixty or seventy thousand a month, so eight hundred, eight hundred forty a year. We went for a few years where, you know, we saved four or five hundred thousand dollars in those funds, but we knew we were planning for, you know, one-to-one, like now, purchases and different things.
If, if we do go to a bonding capacity, does it have to be a two-thirds vote or just a one percent, just a majority?
Depends on if the rate is above two-seventy. If it's above two-seventy, it only requires one question, but I still think it's sixty percent. And if it's above four oh five, it requires two questions. So that's the reason that the best planning process is involve the community. When the community takes a look and looks through your glasses and says what they want for the future and comes up with a plan, you know, they understand why it's been developed and then they're willing to defend it and support it. But if we, if we work outside of them and say, this is the best, trust us, folks have a hard time like that, a hard time.
And it doesn't matter which community and anytime you talk about losing a school.
Yes.
Oh my gosh, what an uproar.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, there's, there are a couple of different scenarios here. For instance, this scenario that has Wall Lake and this facility is a, a, a pre-K for three hundred and then creates a seven twelve at the high school, that gets you part of the way there and it maintains the schools that you have. And so you're taking a first step to an optimal plan. So that's one logical, one possible approach. Or another, like a counter to that, another alternative, and that's what I wanted to talk today, another alternative, if you were deciding you're going to build a middle school to this school, you build a middle school to this school as your first phase and Wall Lake remains open and obviously Lakeview does as well. So those are the sorts of things I, I want to make sure we, we understand about possible first steps.
So what do you think of our next step?
Well, I think the next step is to eliminate two or three of these and then I think it's time to talk to the community. I really do. Well, understand the financial picture, make sure we've got that really, really clear, have that information. Talking to the community, a lot of schools, a lot of schools bring in like the school and private, you could even advise them as a sounding board, help us, help us see the challenges and the strengths of these. First, what we do is we explain the reality that the school district faces and that this is a process that helps secure our community's educational future. So we, we need to develop a planned response so that twenty years from now, we're in a great place. So, and then say, here are some of the ideas that have been developed, give us your feedback and then work with them to put together a process to engage the community. They become sort of a citizens leadership group and they can even be involved in helping to make presentations to the community and taking feedback. That's what I've seen has been a good practice in the past.
At the last work session, a number was thrown out twenty-five or twenty-six million dollars for, for maximum bond limit. Do we know what our maximum bond limit is? Close or as gas?
Yeah, I've got it from right here for you.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be right down then.
But you're not far off it. Yeah, but then you have the seven million for the one cent in the PEPAL. That's the number.
I think it's twenty-one-four. It's on page one-five. This is the right page.
Is that at the four point oh-five levy rate?
I, I guess I'm.
And you said two-seventy would be fourteen million and it's four oh-five is twenty-one million. And then how we got up to that twenty-seven or eight million was borrowing against the rev, revenue, there's sales tax revenue, one cent money.
You said earlier, if you have a two point seven rate, you had one question, if you had four point oh-five, you had two questions on the vote. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah. The state of Iowa requires go to pass general obligation bonds. They allow the district to extend up to two dollars and seventy cents of assessed valuation and they only require one vote. But to extend beyond that up to the four oh-five asks, can we extend this up to four oh-five? So you have to answer a question about can we issue genuine obligation bonds and then can we extend that up to four oh-five? That, that's a really difficult challenge to be right in your candidate, I mean, your questions.
In the last couple of years, I don't remember seeing a whole lot of bond issues being passed. I mean, maybe I'm.
Well, I'm forty-nine and I think there's only been one in this district and that was here. I don't think Wall Lake ever asked for one. Lakeview might have done one to put the gym on, I don't know, but that would have been right when I was born and. Yeah, and Auburn hasn't had one. So, you know, it's, the bond issues are not, I would say, very popular in the district just because it took, I don't know how many votes to get this elementary school built, but it was seven. And I know a couple of them were after our other elementary school were actually, was already condemned. So when you know you don't even have a school and it doesn't pass, that shows you a little bit of the opposition that we'd be against.
Yes.
Right, and what I'm saying is this half of the state, the western half of the state had been starting to bluster in terms of years and they just finally got one passed.
Well, then you throw in if they're going to close the school.
Yeah. Eliminate one tower or two communities.
Exactly.
I didn't tell you how that votes could go.
Well, that might make this planning process even more important. You know, that, that part of this because if, if you have an extensive plan and this may, may be a fifteen-year plan, Sam, is that out of line? And, and there may have to be small pieces down that road, but we know we can't go bond and do a twenty-five million, we don't think we can go bond and do a twenty-one million dollar project. So.
I also don't think we can do nothing.
I agree. And that's where.
It's just as bad if we do nothing as it is if we go and ask for four dollars and five cents.
Doing nothing is the biggest threat to your sustainability.
So you asked, or you, you suggested that we eliminate a couple of these.
Yes.
My thought with this whole thing, you know, if it is fifteen years, if it's twenty years down the road, I see our district looking like two schools, one Lakeview and this one here. Obviously, it'd be, it'd be completely stupid for us to get rid of this one. So that's one we got. So we've got to keep this one. I see as a bridge to get to that, three schools. This one, one of Lakeview and one of Wall Lake. And we just move that through in a, in a timeframe that, you know, whatever that is. I took twenty years of student enrollment numbers and I put it into a spreadsheet and then I took those numbers and I put it out another twenty years. And in twenty years, if we do the same thing we've done for the last twenty years, we'll be at seven hundred kids. So it, it's not like we're gonna get to seven hundred kids in five years, but seven hundred kids is a long ways from where we're at right now. And you're talking about a PK six with six hundred kids right now.
Right.
So. That, that's my thought. And all those other ones, I maybe could throw out, I wouldn't care if we looked at them anymore.
How many students was this school built for?
To me, this looks like it's a school for at least five hundred.
How many elementary students we have right now?
Four hundred in total, I think. Maybe just a little over four hundred. Our enrollment.
Elementary, you're not though, four?
That's case, I'm sorry, that's PK four. That's what we currently have.
Yeah, we need that down for five, six.
Right, so we had to five, six.
Since two thousand thirteen, we have lost eighty students. Just in actual kids in the, sitting in the desks, being educated over the last five years. Since two thousand thirteen, fourteen, when we did enrollment to the first time.
Twenty years. So you're always going to, you know, in five years, you're going to be down to seven fifty if you close the whole.
Just to throw aside, is it feasible, I mean, the four hundred students that we have, is it feasible for them to fit in this building right now and function without any improvement? I guess just that's my question.
Four hundred students? Sure seems like it. I don't know.
It'd be tight, but, I mean, yeah.
Well, I think there were four hundred kids in here at one point. And so even if we say it's tight, we would have thought that was just fine at some point. I'm thinking back, I think more, more familiar with like Lakeview, we think it feels tight now. That isn't nearly as many kids as used to be on the Lakeview building and we thought it was just fine. Now, I, today's today. I also get that and then things are different, things have changed. So when we talk about tight, I think you just have to kind of like create the context of tight might be twenty-two kids per classroom, not fourteen, which we might have now. Those sorts of things.
Yeah, and this was a K-six building at one time.
That makes sense, or this design.
I mean, not just, I mean, is that another option to get us to stair step down without spending much money at all? I mean, if we truly want to look at savings of costs, is that an option to kind of help us work through and improve the middle school and the high school with some of our funding and do those projects without spending much here and still accomplish the three, two, you know, down to approach? I don't know.
I just, I think you can throw that out there, but I think in the, in alienating a bunch of people. I mean, if, if you're talking about closing the Wall Lake building.
I'm just throwing out, I mean, just throwing out.
I mean, that alienating people is gonna do the same thing you closed, that was the school here.
If you, if you close this building and alienating SAC City building.
Well, the middle school.
Well, right.
And that'd be an idea that I think makes sense to me. We talked about six point five million to make this elementary school for six hundred and whatever. And you said three point, some of that was, three and a half million was probably to build the, the damn cafeteria and all that expansion. And the two point seven was physical needs, I assume that's the air conditioning and updating and whatever.
Accessibility changes, wiring.
You start talking about numbers like that, that's easily doable with, with your PEPAL and saving money over a couple of years, two, three years. You don't have to do anything, you don't have to ask other people for any money. And the other option that we haven't talked about yet is a voted PEPAL, which might be a way to get here. The only thing I've heard mentioned is, is bond, bond, bond. But there's a voted PEPAL that, that also brings in options for money. If thirty-three cents brings in one twenty, you bring in two sixty more, you did a dollar vote that way. So that and your saving money, you could do things like that without, I'm not saying not involve the public, they need to know what you're up to and what you're, what you're doing, but those, that noise is easy to find.
One of the things I've seen the districts do, now that we've got context, in other words, big picture outcomes, I've seen them focusing on first steps. What are incremental first steps? You know, so that you could look at different funding approaches and what that can, what that can do. So you take, you've got this in the back of your mind, you understand that, but you really spend time now starting to understand, okay, well, if we want, if we want a first step that, that leaves through facilities and communities, this is what that looks like. If we want a first step that reaches a certain dollar amount or is funded, that's what that looks like. So that's one of the possibilities about what we can do next.
I'm probably the only one sitting here that thinks this, and I, I think maybe I was the person that asked about it earlier at a, at a previous meeting. I really would like us to consider, before we just completely throw it out, keeping our youngest kids, our pre-K, K kids, for instance, as close to home as we could. And it's not like I have grandkids those grades in this district, so I'm not speaking on that level. But I think as a grandparent, but also thinking as a parent, if those four and five-year-olds are in at least the half of the district where they live, I think there's a benefit to that. I know what it does then is it makes two separate sets of kindergarten, two separate sets of preschools. But I don't know, but what I, I believe that the value of having them closer to home, I, I just think there's some advantage to doing that. And I don't know that I understand completely what the costs are, but before you threw that out with the, maybe with the bathwater, I'd like you to at least think about that. It's hard to think that way if you don't have four-year-olds in your house. Well, I think that that's gonna live in the south part of, in the south part or where the north, well, the north part wouldn't be the problem. We live down by Ariva. That would be the example. And my just-turned-four-year-old that made it to school is gonna come here. There's nothing wrong with coming here. It's just that whole transportation and it's a, it's a really hard thing for parents and something much more acceptable is something closer to home for little kids, I think. And I'm not lobbying for more at Lakeview, I'm lobbying for our youngest kids and how their parents might feel about where they go to school. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe parents would be like, nah, that's not.
Those cost projections that you handed out earlier, Sam, are, does John have them?
He does.
Does, does each one of these scenarios have a cost, does he have a cost projection on those?
Because, pre-serve the buildings.
Because that's.
You have the totals that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be very interesting to me to be able to see, you know, especially in a two and a three school scenario, what, what money are you spending at one building?
And those are, that's just the first cost of construction. So it's not, we haven't put together or projected the operating costs other than through our lifecycle cost model. We could print a report for you, but I don't want you to think that that's the staffing cost. It's only the delta in the staffing cost, if that makes sense, between the scenarios. So, you know, the more, the more I think about it, the more I hear, we might, we might really focus on a ver, a variety of first steps. And once we've got that sort of framed, maybe that's what you then take to the community. It should be arranged to offer real choice or to get real feedback, but in multiple community school districts, I, I can't emphasize now how important it is to involve them in a real way. And sometimes people have, the, the end game is so far down the road and it's such a big number that people can check out on that. But the first steps is, you know, something that comes real in the next five years is something that they'll want to weigh in on. And you know that you can take a couple of different first steps and still preserve two good, you have really two good paths here as far as I'm concerned. One where the high school is a seven twelve and one where it's. One where the high school is a seven twelve and one where it's a nine twelve. Those are two really strong paths, and there's lots of different ways to get there.
So kind of a off-the-topic question, when we do go to the public with everything, what is our role in that whole thing?
It's, it's great if you are active participants, you are there, people get to have access to you, pick your brain, and it's important for, you're the ultimate decision-makers. If it seems like something is, is moving in a direction and you're not, and you're not involved, that's a path of failure, because then when the community says, these are what we think, if you've not been part of it, you're not necessarily willing to accept it. At least that's what I've seen in other communities. So what, what I've seen work really well is for you to attend to sit, we facilitate sessions where we have folks sit at tables. It's not a town hall meeting format, that's just a horrible format for any sort of community involvement. It's just, it's the worst format in the world. So we have folks, we try and put together a format where people, everyone has a chance to weigh in and be heard, cause everyone wants to be heard. This means a lot to everyone, and then everyone reports out to the overall group. So ideally, you'd be part of the just. Of course, you'd have to, you would want, to be honest, you would also want to try and take on a reporter's mentality, certainly you can give your opinion, but you would really want to understand, and definitely you would not want to try and dominate a conversation. I think in a perfect world, cause you, you just want to hear what people have to say.
I guess my, my question was, is are we gonna have the public asking us questions? Are we gonna facilitate the whole thing?
Yeah, we would facilitate the whole thing. That's, that's what we do. We would involve, it would, ideally, we would involve some, some citizens in helping, That gives citizens ownership of the outcome, which is important too. So with a logical next step, we could put together a range of first step options that range from a small investment to a larger investment in the associated scope of work, working with John to understand financial constraints, that, that two seventy number is an important number, because the two questions are, I would just stay away from that at all costs, just kind of. But, you know, the other funding options, I think are important to explore.
I think Brent mentioned something that I guess I hadn't considered, you know, when we talked previously about the voted pebble, you'd be able to sort of borrow against it, and maybe your interpretation would be good also is if we just, if we could get it done and save it, you can set a bar against it, and then in three or four years, we've saved another million and a half dollars or whatever that number is that we hadn't saved prior, prior, you know, for some of these projects. So, let's, we put that together with, we could save another four or five hundred thousand yeah, with the one cent money, one way or another, and that, all of a sudden, you're saving some real money. And I think back to the last project that was done in Lakeview, which was the building for our department, and we paid cash for that, and it was probably second-guessed by some people, but, you know, nobody was paying additional taxes because of it, you know.
What's nice about the voted pebble is fifty percent, that's supposed to be sixty percent.
And at least half our communities have had before, that we've seen and may know it's well, so.
Another piece of this, I think that I think about is the technology that we're involved with, and we're just kind of rolling around to the beginning of the replacement of kinds of things, but sort of like in your own personal budget, not committing yourself so much to something that there's nothing then, nothing left for anything that happens, and we, I don't think we'd ever do that, but it's also, you know, are there some ways that we can kind of determine that that's gonna be for each of the next five years, just in general, to say, here's just expected expenses that we have, or, and X hundred thousand for the unexpected, and, or, we've got great potential for buildings and not, not a lot of the other things that we need that could be.
Yeah, that's, that's an important consideration, because facilities have a considerable impact on your operational, financial health. If the state of Iowa doesn't fund schools in a way that allows them to operate inefficiently for long, inefficiently for long.
So how do we go forward?
Do you want to set, do you want to set another work session?
I would have, I would set another work session before we involve the public, the public can come and listen to us and ask us questions later, but I like the first step idea, possible first steps. I mean, I don't have my head wrapped around all that yet, I mean, I understand the concept, but I'd like to see some of those.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, so we, we feel good about those things before we're with the public, I think.
That became obvious to me through this. I like Barb's idea though, too, about having kind of a projection of what's gonna happen, where we're gonna, we'll need money for the next five years. I mean, is it gonna be computers, is it gonna be mechanical, those kind of things.
I can look back five years and see what we've done, and if I move that forward, you know, just do a projection.
It probably sounds a little crazy, but now that some of these are out there, I look at the principles, but I think I can picture how we could better predict staffing needs. If we're talking seven twelve and it's three sections of seventh grade, three sections eighth grade and all what, I mean, I think we can look at this and probably do a little more condesplay to what staffing might be, because that is a big part of what the budget is. Now that I see this, I'm thinking, we kind of goofed on, I should have started that a couple meetings ago.
That's the biggest part of the question.
That is the biggest.
Okay.
Another thing that hasn't been mentioned, at least I haven't mentioned, I was on the board when we decided to consolidate, go for that vote and everything, part of that vote was location of the high school versus the middle school, things like that, and one of the biggest things that, that I, as a board member, decided that Lakeview should have a high school was because of the state, I think, was the degree we had due at that time, some council, you have the state, you come look at our facilities and everything, give us an idea. The biggest thing was central location for the high school, as far as the district, and there isn't any town that's any more central located than Lakeview. So in my opinion, that's probably what the high school is going to end up in the long run, it's where it is now, and that's where I think it should end up if central location is supposed to be a huge part of where it's supposed to be at, so. Just from the, that, that was part of the, a big, a big part of the way I voted, and I know several other board members voted that way too, because of that, so, certainly. That's understandable, watching.
Sam, I didn't hear shit of Brent.
Sorry, I remember meeting, we began the last meeting.
First every couple of years off.
Board's been gone too often. Well, can we, can you have a date for your next, does this work well before the next board meeting?
No.
I think it's worked well.